Ladies and gentlemen, following to order this meeting of the school committee, March 7th at 6:19. All right. Let's start with on finding agenda again, which I took out. We have, I'm going to ask you, we have a group of students here and I sort of for our student spotlight, would it be okay with everybody if we shifted the agenda so that they don't have to go through the minutes and public comment and all? All right, since I see no objection, we will begin with starting meeting 1664 with the student spotlight. Courtney, I think this is your group over there.
Yes. Hi there, I'm Kat in the hat.
I'm Horton, the elephant.
I'm Daisy, my bird.
I'm General Genghis Khan Schmidt.
And we are the cast of Susan Cole. We hope that you have noticed our advertisements and will come see the show. We know you want to, more than you know. So send out the word, make it loud, make it clear that we are here.
We are here.
At Mount Everett Regional School District at 7:00 PM, both on the 15th and 16th of March, and then at 2:00 PM at the 17th of March as well. These will be for everyone to see. Make sure to tell your family.
Thank you so much. Is everyone else in the cast as great as you guys are?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can guarantee.
Is there anything else that you would like to tell us, either in rhyme or not?
We know you'll love it.
A very quick question, for I see some of you've been in shows before. How long have you been involved with theater at Mount Everett or under Mountain or wherever?
Since third grade and into 11th.
Since before I can remember.
Since third grade, but then I took a little break and, but then I started doing it again in ninth grade.
Third grade to my senior year now.
Wow. That's what I call it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for, we just had a budget hearing, it's so nice.
You're way more excited.
Like this. Thank you so much, thank you for staying to make the presentation for us and we look forward to the show.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Break the leg, you should.
Courtney, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, yes, you're all invited. If you've never seen Susan Cole tapes, over 22 of the Sue stories and interplies them into one show. And it's very interesting, it has a lot of great messages. It's great for adults, it's great for families, and we hope to, you spread the word. And we'll see you guys next weekend.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's go to.
Sues.
Yeah. All right, let's, excuse me, over here. All right, let's go to the minutes from our last meeting. Do I have a motion on approval for that?
I make the motion. Do you approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, so Kim and Carl, any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we will vote. Nancy?
Prue.
Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, David?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
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 Same.
And I'm a yes, so we have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yeses, and an abstention. Thank you very much. Enrollment report.
So it is on 2B in the packet, and we are at September 24 for the March 1st enrollment.
Okay, any questions on our enrollment statistics? Seeing none, let's move on to, who's there? Receipt of correspondence, any for us?
I don't know yourself.
Okay, in that case, do we have student representative report?
Mr. Carpenter, anyone?
They haven't had a meeting since the last time we met. This got thought maybe one of our Susan Cole performers might give a quick report, but they're not ready, so.
That's important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next week.
Yeah, we'll have something for you.
All right, any public comment? Seeing none. Business manager's report.
Very quickly, you're accurate, I think you have the warrants that are being presented tonight for your approval. Pretty self-explanatory in terms of what they were, health insurance, better, as well as payroll. Little sort of snippet of what else.
Move to approve the warrants.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on the warrants? All right, seeing none, we'll start, Art?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Sarah?
David?
Yes.
And Kyle?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes, all right, unanimous approval in terms of the warrant. Okay.
I don't think we have, do we have anything else?
We have, you have anything else?
No.
Grants or bunch of transfers?
Nope.
Nope. All right, anything with business with district member towns?
Thank you.
Okay.
Nope, I don't think I left you out.
Okay, chairman's report. That's me. I just have a very quick, one, I have to compliment in the ads that you put in for registration, I actually got comments, a positive comments. This was for the shopper's guide, it was a major ad, both sides, a whole thing in Spanish and in English, and I received a couple of comments, which is really, for people to take the time for that, it was clearly a big impression. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You know, it's a very friendly way to announce a pro forma type of activity.
I'm really happy to hear that.
I'm glad.
We wanted to make it really big and really.
Yeah, much appreciated. Have you gotten any responses?
Oh yeah.
That we should know, like what, what happens from the field when they see it out in the communities?
They reach out to us about registering their children, so we get calls and we send out registration packets where they come in, so after we see some of the parents coming to get them. So we're in the middle of registering right now and our numbers are ticking up.
Did you want to add to that?
No.
Okay, Kim?
Now, do you call the principal, do they call you, who do they call?
They call, they call the art assistants. And they're listed.
Okay.
Call Karen.
Well, if Karen?
Karen, forget it.
Okay, but Kathy. Because somebody was asking me because they want to get registration baskets or packets, I'm like, I don't know.
And if it's easier, you can put them touch, I would just forward it to Kathy.
Absolutely.
Because obviously we're enrolling pre-K and kindergarten.
Oh, oh, is that registration, they have older kids they want to register?
Okay, so that goes directly to his office, I got it.
And older kids will go to his office to track them.
I should also report, Kim and I both sat in on a Zoom meeting that was going on with Sandisfield and Otis, and the issues they're facing as a district, because we've had people contact us, a lot of them contacted Kim, about going back to Dennis, you started a number of years ago, because that's facing enormous expenses. So we did not speak, we were just there to observe, I wanted to get a sense of what the issues are that they're facing. And it's real disparity in terms of funding that they have and whether they will be able to sustain as a district. So we took no action, we just gathered information, and that's where we stand. But I found it, you know, really interesting, I did not realize how little there is in Sandisfield in terms of having the financial ability to support education, and the disparity between Otis, where there are businesses, there is more of a population, so you could really see statistically while there's an issue, and I would suggest we may want to put a discussion of this and any outreach as a future agenda item, but what do you think?
I think it's sitting here, I mean, I think we just, I mean, I think.
It'd be interesting, a conversation.
Exactly, exactly. So, and the other thing is, I don't know what's happened to anyone else, you know, the end of year contributions that you make, or a number of us making everything, I was shocked that you get the letter back that says, "Thank you for your donation of one." I actually got two letters back with handwritten notes thanking me and by extension us who did it for the involvement in terms of the majority ownership. So people who take the time as heads of these organizations, it was much appreciated that it was all included. So that's really, I don't want to go, you know, late going on, but those are the basic things I want to say. So with that, I'll turn it on to a totally exhausted superintendent.
Yeah, I might just pass and wait till we get to the district initiatives piece because my report is the last hour. For right now.
Okay, do we have anything from Julie?
We do not, this week.
Okay, and you extended our condolences to us?
I will, I continue to.
Thank you. In between everything else, all the support. To remember your team, it's really hard. All right, with that, Sandy, it's your turn.
Okay, well, I think you already touched on one of the main things I was going to talk about, which is that we've got our pre-K and kindergarten's registration and screening notice out to everybody. We're planning ahead and making some minor changes, I think, to our screening process this year. We want to make sure that we're inclusive of the screeners for our English learners as part of the process, so that we have that information before they enter into kindergarten. So that is in the middle of being planned right now. Our major thing has been planning for next year, and part of what we were talking about tonight as far as the budget is what we are planning for for next year, so support for the budget is greatly appreciated because what we are seeing is, I've talked about here many, many times, is that our students and everybody are having some struggles emotionally, and we're trying to really support as much as humanly possible. We're working very closely with McKinley Pediatrics and CHP to identify needs and supports for our students, and that's been incredibly beneficial, I can't say how much that has worked. We started off by talking about one student, and I was just looking at my notes this week, and we talked about nine. And we're finding help for students where it's needed, and the ways that we support here through our school psychologists and our school adjustment counselors, nursing staffs, all of those folks is really making a difference as we plan ahead, because there are some pretty significant struggles that are happening. So you saw behavior specialists proposed in the budget that is really targeting our younger students, and when we say behavior specialists, we're talking about social emotional needs, behavioral needs, et cetera. And this is just a way for someone to be here to support the staff that are currently working with the students so that they can have a better chance of being successful in the classroom and to work together as part of the team with the other folks I was just mentioning, like our school adjustment counselor is teaching deaf, et cetera. So those are a couple of the big things that we're really focused on, program development for next year and looking at our needs, and that's basically the highlights for right now. I've mentioned to you that we're in the middle of our program review with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They've completed our English Language Education Review and sent me a draft report. I'm responding to that right now because there are a couple of things I felt that they missed, so we're in the middle of a response to that, and we're ready to do the final reports. And next month, on April 9th.
Sorry. Bell function on the phone.
Next month, on April 9th, they will be in this building to review special education and civil rights, and then we'll be following, they'll be following up the report after that. So we've been meeting regularly to gather up any, there are some new requirements through Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, especially related to early literacy screening. So we're in the process right now of gathering some more information for that, because when we did the self-assessment, which believe it or not was over a year ago, we're looking at documents we submitted a year ago, this changed as of July 1st, so we're submitting some new documents and they're going to be here reviewing that. So that's coming up soon, and we will certainly be sharing with you the results of that whole process.
Any questions, Sandy? Actually, I always do. I just, what's more of a comment, every, or professional organization I belong to, every, you know, newsletter, everything across the United States, it has been social emotional issues, and that the pandemic is not over when it comes to that, and the impact on teachers as well.
Yes.
And, you know, the fact that we're trying to, you know, be sensitive to it, the fact that you're bringing in a new staff member, the fact that, you know, that meeting with students, with teachers and all, I mean, it is horrible. And I read a study of how the second graders who live their whole lives basically in pandemic era, they still can sit down, they can.
That's correct.
They are, you know, kids who normally have never had any of these problems and issues. So in a way, it, you know, said, okay, we're not alone, but the reality is we need the financial support to be able to address what we're facing in our schools, and unfortunately, there are a lot of people who don't realize that.
That's very true, unfortunately, there has been a number of grants that we've been able to apply for and receive that have really bolstered some of our programs here. I can't say enough how, I think people recognizing that the warm line is there for their access is incredibly important. I know how difficult it is to get a counselor in this area. We try to get counselors for students all the time, and it's very difficult to do. It is getting a little bit better, I will say that, I feel like the community is really reacting to the need. But in order for us here at the school to support them, it's been wonderful to have the ability to build our program some, so yes, it's a huge need, and you just mentioned second grade, we talk about this all the time. I feel like second and third grade are big challenges for a lot of reasons, because they were just entering into school when the pandemic started, and so they didn't have that start in the way that is typical in any way, shape, or form, and you're right, we're seeing children behaving in much younger ways.
Sandy, when you talk about behavior intervention specialist, that need is someone who kind of developed an implement plan for a kid who has.
Yes, in conjunction with our other staff members, yes.
Yeah, so how, you know, is that what that person is supposed to be doing?
Yeah, I think, you know, based on our needs and the things that we've discussed over the course of time here, in order for all students to be kind of consistent, have the support consistently in their programming, we felt like we needed an additional person who was available to address needs as they emerged, and then be a part of a team to develop plans for students who might need additional supports, and be available to not only support the students, but the team, and coming up with ideas, the best ways to manage appropriately. So that's what we were looking at. We have developed that at the secondary level. We have two special educators who are also behavior specialists and support some of our students who have the highest social emotional needs. We of course have people who are trained in managing social emotional and behavioral needs, but we did have one designate, and we felt like it would be very beneficial to have an elementary person to help us. So that's what that was.
And have the numbers picked up on the case of the warm line?
Unfortunately, not as much as we'd like, minorly, but not as much as we'd like.
All right, gotta get the word out.
We've got business cards now, I meant to bring them, and I apologize, I meant to bring them to you tonight, I forgot. I will next time.
Yeah, we can have a shot in a week, we'll be here with you.
Okay, so we really, we missed Sheffield Times out or anybody, others of you have newsletters? That we, you know, let's put that in there.
I sent you, I think I sent that to everybody. I sent, I sent an article.
That was a while, okay.
And I added the QR, QR code.
So we'll promote it, because that's a wonderful opportunity.
It really is, so I would hope that people would take advantage of that, for sure.
All right, any other questions for Sandy? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any new business? And we're up to transcend and early college and pathways, so I turn it over to you.
So my fabulous team is going to support my cap today, so here, Mr. Carpenter coming from our core team today. And then I think Mr. Thompson's going to share for Innovation Pathways.
So just really quickly, in terms of transcend, our core team went to Texas last week. We had a really good time, really productive time trying to sort of formalize a little more of what we think we're going to do around studio experience, some planning for some meetings we're excited about. The first one will be in next week on Tuesday for the design team, and then in April for the activity team. And talked about some ways that we're going to roll out some of the pilots that we started with all our stakeholders, including students, staff, families, and then all community. We spent some time talking about some of the original pilots we did, which were mostly in middle school, testing out some things like peer interviews, ways for students to work together, to bounce ideas off each other. You know, we use some various things like fishbowl, where one student taught, and everybody on the outside is really shooting questions at that, and then kids wrapped what they liked and what they didn't like at the middle school level. Today, we spent some time with our coach, Martha, who's outstanding, and we had our teachers talking about sort of the next round of pilots which are going to recruit more high school students. And one of the things that they're going to discuss is redesigning schools and letting kids bounce some ideas around that. The experience in Texas was very similar to our experience in Denver, just being around a bunch of school districts who share a lot of the same things we do, being in rural communities, but also sharing the passion for innovation and thinking about different ways that we can reach all our students. I think all of us kind of share the same idea, which is you can sit down, probably half the population in most of our schools, and the kids would say that they're having an outstanding time, and they love school, and they feel like they're getting what they need, and I think all the school districts involved want that percentage to be much higher, and want to find ways to really hook all the kids in and get everybody excited about their education, so, you know, we had a really great time. And we're excited about where we're going with this, and the meetings we're going to have over the next couple of months and sort of fine tuning what we're going to try to roll out next year. As far as early college goes, you know, we're right about the middle of the semester, a little short of the middle of the semester, but we're getting close to the break, the Silence Rock gig, so for us, that's usually an indication we're getting close. And so, you know, we're off to a good start, we're planning our celebration for the students from the first semester, and we haven't announced that yet in terms of when we're going to do that, probably during advisory, because we're supposed to get people from the state coming in to check out the program. So our hope is to try to do our celebration at the same time there, there. The context of going back and forth with us seems to be exciting to see sort of how we handle that part of recognizing our students who did early college in the first semester, so, you know, we're going to run it out to you when we're going to do that, because the second part of that celebration obviously is to recognize our, the next group of staff members who got their initial certification, so. And we'll be recognizing the students and the staff. And Chris, if you want to jump in for Innovation?
Sure.
Thank you.
So Innovation Pathway, of course, that grant money has done a number of things for us. One of the things would be our 3D printing initiatives, and I don't mean to put Asha on the spot, but I see that she's on the Zoom call, so, not that she has to say anything or jump in, but we did coordinate it. Asha teaches a STEM high school class, and we did coordinate a lesson for her group in conjunction with BCC around 3D design and 3D printing. So the BCC professor, Addie Wendersen, came down and worked with Asha's class for a couple of days on how to use Fusion 360 and how to print it and so forth, so all of our students ran through a basic print job and trying to coordinate our efforts with some of the great stuff that goes on at BCC and get kids excited about some of their programs, their mechatronics and things, and their Fusion design and 3D design and stuff, I don't know, Asha wants to jump in and say anything to that?
Asha, any comments?
I, not, not really, it's been a great experience, I really appreciate that Chris helped to make that happen for us. I hope he can hear me.
We can.
And, okay, we're planning a field trip to go to BCC sometime later this month to look at their facilities there, and hopefully get some of the kids excited about maybe going to BCC to do some of their STEM programs, either, you know, after high school, or even maybe possibly while they're still, you know, in high school, if there's, if there's some classes they could take, either online or in the evening or something like that. So, but no, it was a really, I was amazed at how quickly the kids picked it up with just a couple of short class period of instruction from the woman from BCC, Addie Wendersen, who teaches the whole course for them, and they just ran with it, and they made some really cool stuff, and then Chris made it really easy to hook the, to get the 3D printer up, you know, he brought it upstairs for us, and we showed me how to hook things in and print them up, and it's been, it's been really fun.
Do you know, any of you, whether our kids could use the two free courses at BCC? Could it be in this area? You know, when they get the seniors in the fall and spring, a free course?
Specific course offering for that?
Yeah, we'd have to look at it, I don't remember seeing like 3D design as one of the courses that they allow the kids, I mean, they allow a whole bunch of classes.
Could we do an inquiry?
Yeah, we could.
So, yeah, so that's one aspect that's kind of related to Innovation Pathway, the other thing going on. The other thing going on right now, we have the aerospace engineering classes going on. So the big thing for them this week is Wednesday will be their officially observed flight as part of the American Rocketry Challenge. So if anybody's been driving down Route 7, River 7, 78 split for the last three or four weeks, you might see some big thing going up in the sky and a bunch of smoke and go, what, what happened over there? That's just us. So the kids have been working on, we can present one rocket, we can have backup rockets, whatever. There's five kids in the class. Basically, the challenge is, the, the changes every year, the parameters will, but this year's challenge is 820 feet, there's an egg on board, egg has to go up, separate the payload, parachute comes out, it come down, egg survives, touchdown. There's a, so there's an altitude parameter and there's a flight time parameter, 43 to 46 seconds, so you get penalized for anything outside of there.
What time on Wednesday is taking place?
Uh, probably around 9:30.
I don't think you're crashing your call.
So it's a member of the National Association of Rocketry, which will come to campus here, we will meet him and we will take him to our, the field that we fly at. We get three flights, take the best two, goes into a national leaderboard. If we're in the top 100, we'll get invited to Virginia in May to the national championship.
So if anyone in school maybe wanted to observe this?
You're welcome to come. If you want to come, probably the easiest thing to do is come to campus here at 9 o'clock on Wednesday morning. We have it coming Wednesday, Monday and Tuesday are kind of high winds and some rain still, so, but Wednesday's finally supposed to calm down a little bit, so we should have some gentle breezes, so that's what we're hoping for.
And which field are you using?
Kind of right behind TJ Antiques there, that back field there. Right where 7 starts to bend and 78 goes that way.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're over there. So thank you, big thanks to Pine Hill Farms for letting us use that field. We found that while we have launched a little bit out here in the baseball fields, if there's any breeze, it's just, it's just a little too tight. We end up in, we have a few rockets hanging from trees if you want to go see them. But anyway, that's the big news there. The drone program, again, the after-school program, not directly an Innovation Pathway, but it feeds into that whole thing. All three of our teams have been invited to the New England Regional Championship, that is on March 16th at Cromwell, Connecticut High School. There will be 26 teams, 26 teams from around New England area, but really in terms of Massachusetts, it's just us and East Long Meadow. That's the only two schools doing this drone program in Massachusetts. So the other teams will be Vermont, New Hampshire, Connecticut, Rhode Island. So hopefully things, hopefully things will go well there.
Any questions for the...
Chris, I didn't catch what day that was going to be, that we're going to come and shoot.
This is Wednesday, it's coming Wednesday. This is coming Wednesday, was it the 13th?
Yes, the 13th.
Wednesday, the 13th will be doing our official rocket launch. So, and Smitty will be at drone practice tomorrow.
And Smitty's the, I was just gonna ask whether he...
He has confirmed that he will be here tomorrow.
Okay. And what time should drone practice?
Three to four in the high school cafeteria.
All right. A comment, just all I've been reading is about how downing people are in terms of education and the fact that we're, that you guys are doing what you're doing is such a, it's a credit to our staff and it's a credit to the leadership because there's so many burdens and the fact that we have people excited about education and the stuff that our kids have been writing about their experience, it's like you want to share all of it. And, you know, I personally, as a citizen taxpayer here, just really appreciate that we looking on the positive side. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Art.
Chris, what ages are in the other program, not the drone program?
Program?
Yes.
We do it with the high school kids. It's, it's one of the few competitions that we kind of run in class, so it's, it's nine through 12.
Okay. Bonnie?
Yes?
No, not related. You may be seeking my approval. So Bonnie, I was briefly stricken by about a triphorosomiasis, which is the Latin for African sleeping sickness, right? And I, and I forgot to ask Beth during her presentation, two, two questions, non-confrontational, non-controversial.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so do I, can I?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so Beth, two questions. One, does GSA still exist here?
Yes.
Is there a faculty advisor?
Yes.
Yeah, it hasn't since, yeah, since COVID really. We still have some kids who are loosely involved, but we haven't had like normal meetings. They have gotten involved in some other things. Simon's Rock just recently invited them to an event. That's the advisor.
The Rock thing that we've arrived at.
Yeah. But he's, it's not, it's not as active as it was prior to...
But there is...
Okay. And I mention it for a reason, because back in the day when it was more active, I was the, I acted as the chaperone to Pride Day in Boston. And I, I, I enjoyed it. The students who went seemed to have a great time. And if, if there's a decision by GSA, whatever current, its current status, if they wanted to do that and they needed a chaperone, I wanted to offer that. And, and along the same lines, is there, is there currently, well, Jesse, would I think of it, to the chess club?
Well, yes, but I wouldn't necessarily call it a club. We have some teachers who are really interested in it and kids are interested in it and so at times during advisory and things like that, there's teachers that are hosting with kids. It hasn't really morphed into what we used to have as a club because a lot of the kids who are involved are athletes or involved on the field, so it's more better than a school.
Well, so again, well, I was the advisor to the chess club and we used to meet pretty regularly once a week after school. And due to, because of the generosity of a former teacher here, Jim Burlstein, we have a batch of chess boards and pieces that are somewhere in storage in the school. Do you know where they are?
They're on eBay.
I would assume some of the ones we're using came from that collection.
Yeah, Jim Burlstein contributed, I don't know, half a dozen, maybe even a bit more than that. So again, I, if there's a desire to have a regular meeting, I would, and I was always the worst of the, of the chess players.
Well, note that, maybe the people will be excited about that.
So I would offer, I would offer to do that. But I, but one thing I won't offer to do is that I was the guy who went out to, to whatever that store was, that's now Sugar and Spice or Sugar and Rye or something, to get treats for everyone.
PJs, yes, PJs. It used to be PJs.
Yeah, it used to be PJs, right. I'm no longer going to do that.
Okay, all right.
Because then I said, you know, contribute what you can and no one contributed. So that's not part of the deal.
Except you did give yourself credit for something else, how it became an opportunity for kids to talk to you about other things.
Yeah.
So it was actually chess and counseling. It was special.
Yeah, in fact, I think that Elliot, does anyone remember Elliot Neskey?
Yeah.
Well, so Elliot Neskey decided to go to law school based on the conversations. Did you know Elliot Neskey is a lawyer?
No.
Yeah, yeah, he recently got married.
He inspired people, that's it.
Or maybe I inspired him to try to correct the errors that I made.
All the way down. There's all sorts of explanation.
I'm trying to figure out my mom's book. Is she like a criminal defense lawyer or something?
No, I...
I just can't believe that it was happening years ago, it's an attorney.
Yeah, well, you, when you, people they know came by his mom's name, which is Neskey, it's Mazarelli, Suzanne Mazarelli, who was a yoga teacher, I think.
But, but you know, given time, it's not...
Okay, no, 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 yeah.
But thank you so much for those offers, because it was, it's special. Moving on to school committee reports, Sarah.
Well, we have the public hearing tonight, which that person served the budget and did a fantastic job of that. I think it was very well received, so that's great. Next, at our meeting next week, school committee meeting, we'll be voting on the budget and then after that is the town meeting, so that I don't know if we, we, per committee, I can't...
That must have said something else, so that's, that's what I think there. Thank you so much, but thank you for taking us on. And Nancy?
Hey, pop ad reach is going to be next Thursday, put the budget newsletter together. Sounds like maybe we should be putting something about the warm, warm line in there again. And yeah, getting ready for, getting ready for pressing the tax with all the information that they appreciate so much from the community outreach newsletter. All right.
Thank you. What time on Thursday? I know I put it...
Five.
Five. Okay.
Yeah.
Policy, Dennis, you're up, Dennis.
Okay, first of all, in the material that you have in front of you, the, the policies that will be reviewed in the, in next week's school committee meeting are those four policies that are listed there on the page. And so what happens now is you should take those pages home, read them, and then we actually vote in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
Briefly, that, although Dennis didn't say it specifically, that, that constitutes inclusion of these four policies. That constitutes the required first three.
First three, yes. Okay, so please go over them. This was like an almost two hour meeting you went through on it, so thank you and we've got a whole bunch more.
Oh yeah, we got, we got a lot to go.
Okay. Personnel and negotiations, no, we did not need to read. Art, building is no. Superintendent evaluation.
We're gonna be...
Yeah, we have to, I'll pick some, all righty. Executive minutes review.
Yeah, within the next few days, I am going to send whatever we call that thing, that thing we...
To do what?
Yeah, I don't know how to do it, but I'll, I'll say I don't know how to do it, but please take this as, is it a doodle?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to try to get, yeah, to doodle, to try to get another meeting in the, in the reasonably near future to review the executive, some of the executive minutes that we haven't yet looked at.
Thank you. Anything from the lands board?
I recently signed a bunch.
Craig Helen hasn't met. MAC, anything new and exciting?
Well, yeah, the exciting thing is that I have to give the same report as I gave last time, which is I, in my rush to get out of, because I didn't, to get out of my house today, I forgot to bring along the report. It's a very brief report on MAC, MACSS joint meeting back in November. The, and really the only thing I have to report on is the result of the, of the votes on the resolutions. Fair, fairly quick.
If you want to, if you want to send it electronically to Michelle, she'll put it in the packet for next weekend.
Oh, okay.
If you want to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Kyle, anything with the Eagle Fund?
I have not heard anything from them, no.
Yeah, they, I don't think they met, I don't...
I think they switched their meeting, right?
Oh, they, yeah.
I think their timing is to the fall.
It's October.
Yes, I think that's right.
Oh, for the grant part?
Well, yeah.
With the meeting, okay.
But I think that means all of the timing has changed, so all of their, their cycle was...
Okay. Nancy, anything with early childhood?
She had to go.
She had to go, that's none. And I don't have anything, so the Vercher, you're kind of at a drone practice tomorrow, trying to get that. All right, community health, no. All right, we haven't had, dealing nothing with our regional agreement, pretty cute there. Okay, future agenda items.
We're still waiting for the audit report. We have them busy doing other things.
Yes, a little bit.
Love it. And I think that this collaboration is what you were talking about, is the items we're discussing.
Right. Okay, so that's been covered and we'll get an update as time goes. All right, anybody have anything else that you want to add to future agenda items? Okay, and then we're not having any executive session.
We're adjourned.
Yes, what? The dynamic duo, all in favor, just show hands. Okay, we are adjourned at 7:07.